Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. It's nice to be back in person again. So our next two meetings are going to be Tuesday, October 25th and November 22nd, which will be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Scary to think that we are already talking about Thanksgiving, but anyway. We do have one set of minutes to approve. We had minutes from the meeting of August 23rd that was circulating among the board members. I know I made a couple suggestive amendments and Aziz did as well. So is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or...? No? That's fine. Okay. So the way the meeting runs is the first items on our agenda are public hearings. Those are applications that the board has already reviewed, and now it's an opportunity for us to hear from any neighbors if there's any concerns or if you're in support of those applications. So we do have two applications here before us with public hearings this evening. After that, we will not have public comment on any of the other applications. The rest of the agenda is really just reviews. Pretty much those are the first times that we're seeing applications. There are a couple that we needed some additional information or updates on their surveys. So we need to work through any issues with the actual applicants before we open those up to the neighbors. So with that said, we're just going to jump right into everything and get going with it. So item number one is Appeal 4035, Michael Curcio, 33 Cherry Lane, Stormville, requesting a 22-foot sideline variance to allow our proposed 20-foot by 24-foot or 480-square-foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming detached garage, a 24-foot sideline and a 20-foot front yard variance to allow an existing 23-foot by 24-foot or 552-square-foot pre-existing non-conforming garage, and a 282-square-foot variance for a proposed 1,000 total square foot of 1,032-square-feet detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
So good evening. We have had multiple sessions looking at this application. So this is a property that is in an R3 zone, that this property is just over one acre, so it is a non-conforming lot. The property right now has the house in kind of the back corner, the right corner, not corner necessarily, but on the right side. There's a driveway between an existing garage that's only one car length in from the roadway, two-car, two-bay garage there, and then there's a kind of like lean-to or open-ended shed further back on the property. And so what the applicant has presented to us, and by the way, I'm going to just get some of the previous discussions on the record because this is the public hearing, so there are certain things that we've already discussed that I just have to get on the record. And so the applicant is proposing that he'd like to expand on the existing garage, the existing non-conforming use, because detached garages in town are not allowed in front of the residences. And so what he is proposing is was to add another, in essence, two-bay garage, but with one large garage door to it, off to the back of it, so it wouldn't be front for somebody going on Cherry Lane, but it would be more off on the side. The total dimensions of this garage unfortunately are 22 by 47, which is really the size of a house, the size of the footprint, it's 1,032-square-feet footprint, which, you know, if you had two floors on that, which he doesn't, but if you had two floors on it, it would be over 2,000-square-foot house. The applicant has said and stated, and I confirmed that by doing a site visit, that there are other properties in this area that have other non-conforming detached garages in the fronts of their residences. I agree with him. The applicant agreed that they're not all necessarily taken care of, they're not all in great condition. In fact, one very, very close to him is not in great condition at all. But so it is not necessarily out of character to have a detached garage in this neighborhood. What is out of character is somewhat is the size of this, and the fact that it is so close to the property line. We talked about screening, we talked about the fact that there are, as you're pulling into Cherry Lane from Lee Town Road from that direction, there's a lot of vegetation on the left-hand side of the property, so you do see that one side of the garage, again, not in great condition, but again, the applicant has said that his intent is to make the garage look better and was going to be making improvements to it with the expansion of it. Coming from the other direction, the only screening that really exists is some over, some grasses, tall grasses, that is ornamental grasses that have been planted in the front, which doesn't really screen. The applicant admitted it makes it a little difficult to get out of his driveway, but that aside, you know, as one's coming over the hill heading toward Lee Town Road, the property is very, you know, very open to anybody just driving by. The property is maintained well, that's not an issue. There is the remnants of what was an above-ground pool where you've got a little sitting area there, and so one of the things that we've talked about is that the applicant actually does have an alternative location where this garage could go, but it's not the, certainly not the cheapest way to go, because it would mean building a new structure in the back there and possibly eliminating the lean-to or the shed that's there. So, you know, there's certainly issues one way or both ways with this application. The applicant's been working with this board in terms of making some modifications to the original design. I think the original design had the building being 14 feet high, no, higher than that. I think we're down to 14 feet, because he was looking for some storage and kind of a loft area upstairs there. No residential use of this space, but at the end of the day, the board still has to consider the fact that this proposed structure is the size of a small house. Mr. Curcio, he's looking to retire, he's looking to be able to work on cars, he's looking to be able to park his wife's car in that driveway, I agree with that one, not in the driveway, but in the garage itself. No commercial use, he's not looking to operate a business out of this, you know, so it really would be strictly for residential use only by the applicant himself. So is there anything else that I didn't mention that you think is important to get on the record?
No, I think the only thing I'm screening, we are adding grasses, but in addition to the grasses, we're going to be adding evergreens along the driveway that would provide the screening that was...
Yeah, but do we know where along the driveway you're proposing to put those?
Yeah, it's on the site plan.
Okay. And so how many?
Six of them.
Okay, there's a lot of sets of plans, because again, you've worked with us to make some adjustments to this. Oh, okay, all right. Note to Town Hall, the door needs oiling. All right, so comments or questions from board members? Let's start here before we ask...
I'm good.
Yeah, I don't have any further questions. I think we've discussed some on the review. I mean, my main concern was originally that this size, the height of everything, which would make it that much more imposing, and the applicant has worked to reduce that as indicated in your review.
Al, or...
I have nothing further to add. I think we discussed it a lot, and Mr. Curcio has made a lot of modifications.
Okay. So we do have, before I open up for comment for anybody who might be here, we do have three letters from neighbors. They appear to be the same form letter. So the first one dated June 21st, 2022, from a, I hate to not say somebody's name right, but it looks like a Rucaj Quall. I am to whom it may concern, I have a neighbor, Michael and Stephanie Curcio, I review the plans and believe that this garage extension will complement the home and neighborhood. I'm in agreement with this build from 40 Cherry Lane. Then we have one dated June 7th, 2022, from a Christopher Emeluth, 609 Lee Town Road. Okay. Again, same letter, it's a form letter here. And then a third one dated May 18th, 2022, from Jonathan and Erica Trivelis, 24 Cherry Lane. To whom it may concern, I review the plans, believe this garage extension will complement the home and neighborhood. I am a neighbor and in agreement with this build. I believe it will be an asset to the community. I do not object to this extension and look forward to this new addition to our community. If you have any questions, please contact the homeowners listed below, which they're telling us we should contact you. Thank you for your time and review of this new garage addition. We look forward to hearing from you as well as making a positive impact in our community. Oh, sorry, that was the letter that you, I guess you wrote to them. Okay. All right, so with those letters now on the record, is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against the request from Michael Curcio, 33 Cherry Lane, Stormville, requesting a 22-foot sideline variance to allow our proposed 20-by-24-foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming detached garage, a 24-foot sideline and a 20-foot front yard variance to allow an existing 23-foot by 24-foot pre-existing non-conforming garage, and a 282-square-foot area variance for a proposed 1,032-square-foot detached garage? Okay, I need to wait one other comment, again, just to get it on the record. So allowed by code would be a garage, a detached garage that's up to 750-square-feet or 60% of the square footage of the footprint of one's home. And so again, the variance that's needed, this is an oversized garage, and so there is an additional variance needed of 282-square-feet because the garage that is being requested is larger than 60% of the home or 750-square-feet. So is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close and reserve, because we weren't sure...
I make a motion to close the public hearing and reserve the decision.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so there's not a decision tonight, because we needed to hear what your neighbors were going to say. Till next month, we'll issue a decision. You don't have to be here, we'll send it to you shortly thereafter. Okay? Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number two. Again, in our last public hearing, Appeal 4044, Sadiis Rivas, 199 Blue Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a nine-foot by 11-foot left side, nine-foot and 11-foot left sideline variance and a 30 and 32-foot right sideline variance for ground-mounted solar panels pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good evening. So again, we had the opportunity to review your application last month, and this is one where you guys have a long but narrow lot, and so really anywhere you go to put the solar panels on your property is going to need a variance. But you're doing it the right way, you're putting it in the middle, so you're being as least intrusive to your neighbors as possible.
Right, and our roof is not enough to...
Right, you did mention that your roof doesn't point in the right direction or whatever it is. So the issue really, it becomes where's the best place on the property to put this? The one issue that came up in last month's review was the fact that there were two sets of panels, and it was mentioned that there were two services and two utility meters on it. Why would you have two meters on a single-family residence?
Well, it was before we were there, we owned the place, and there was a, I guess, a cottage that's really attached to our house.
Okay.
I don't know why they would have a separate panel, but this is the former owner.
Okay, so is there a second residence on the property?
No, no, it's all our place.
Is the cottage of the house that used to be used for the service of the house, of the main house, and it's been there for over, you know, I don't know, maybe 100 years?
Yeah, but we don't know, there's no other person living there.
Okay, that's what we're trying to get at. What is the current use of that?
Yeah, correct.
It's just for us. There's no, I don't know why...
We're the only owners.
Right, and we don't have a resident.
Well, you would be the only owners.
We don't have a tenant, there's no tenant there, no.
No tenants. Matt, are you okay with that? Okay, just making sure, because it came up actually in the last public hearing, and we were like, wait, there's two services, why would there be two services? So again...
Doesn't make sense to us.
You have no permit to operate any residence, any second residence or anything like that? No accessory apartment, nothing like that?
No, no apartment.
We just need to be sure.
To have an accessory apartment.
No, no.
Okay, so what is the use of this structure at this point? What is it?
Well, it's just for when our children come, we have extra beds, basically.
We have four boys to, you know...
Okay.
Extend the family.
How long have you owned it?
Two and a half years.
Remember, it wasn't that long ago, it was completely redone.
Yes, 1988, 1988, the Mills.
Yeah, Malcolm.
Malcolm Mills owned the place for, since 1988. It's a 1779 house.
Yeah, I remember, probably 12 years or so, I think the structure was redone, maybe that's when they upgraded the electric.
Okay. All right. Okay, we just needed to be sure, because it came up, and then afterwards, we were all like, wait, is there a second residence? So, all right, so again, based on our original discussion, you know, and again, I have the, this is how long and narrow your lot is, so you really have no place, any place on your property that you were looking to put it, is going to be a variance. You just don't even have the, you know, the side yard there to be able to do it. So where you're proposing your house is up here, and the two panels are proposed to be right here, so. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Sadiis Rivas, 199 Blue Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a nine-foot and 11-foot left sideline variance and a 30 and 32-foot right sideline variance for ground-mounted solar panels? Yes? What I'm going to ask, hold on one second, what I'm going to ask you guys, if you could sit down?
Sure.
And if you can come up, just because there's a microphone, so because the meeting gets recorded, we have to get, and then when you're done speaking, we're clipboard for sign-ins? Okay, you can just write your name.
I just had a general question. My name is Ed Heiser, I live on the road. I was just wondering why the panels weren't being mounted on the roof?
Because their roof doesn't face the right direction. For the sun, you've got, your roof has to essentially face south for, to be able to have a productive exposure for the sun.
Yes, I understand that. It faces due west, and then there's a southwest orientation to the roof. I mean, it's a multi-gabled house, so it could be mounted on the roof, all right? And I was just curious as to why...
Yeah, we actually did have that discussion. I don't know how, if it's a gabled roof, I don't know how large the area actually is on the roof.
On the roof, that would be on the roof.
Okay, hold on one second, because I need to get you guys back to the microphone to be able to get that on the record, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you. So if you guys don't mind, if you could come back up and just state that again for us?
Yes, well, the solar company said that the roof, there's not enough, not accorage, it's not enough square footage on the roof, so that was a double reason.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So...
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is Appeal number 4044, applicant is Sadias Rivas, requesting a nine-foot and 11-foot left sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and two 30-foot by 32-feet right sideline variance from the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for mounted, ground-mounted solar panels, the variances. The property is located at 199 Blue Hill Road, Hopewell Junction. The property, a resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, where his applicant seeks to install ground-mounted solar panels pursuant to section, pursuant to chapter 100 of the town code, and where the property is approximately 7.4 acres, and where is, whereas similar to other parcels in the surrounding community, the property is long and narrow, and where the applicant has proposed placing the ground-mounted solar panels in the least intrusive area of the yard, and where, due to the layout of the property, the applicant cannot meet the required setbacks, and where this is a type-two action under seeker, and no further review is required, and where the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on September 22nd, 2022, and where the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on September 27th, 2022, and where the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will still remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The variance could be deemed substantial, but the proposed placement of the ground-mounted solar panels minimizes the requested variances. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Sadias Rivas for one, nine-foot by 11-foot sideline variances from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and two, 30-feet by 32-feet right sideline variances from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for ground-mounted solar panels subject to the applicant's installing screening pursuant to a landscape plan to be approved by the town planner. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Just a second.
Second.
Jim, thank you. Votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
And Al.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So you guys are all set, your motion. Now you have to deal with the building department, please, okay?
Copy, we will be sending the coverage to all of us.
Yep. Okay?
Thank you.
Have a good evening. What? Oh, they have to go to the planning board now? Okay, sorry, we have to go to the planning board instead of the building department. All right, so that's it for public hearings this evening. There's no more public comment on any of the applications at this point, so now we're up to review. So item number three is Appeal 4041, Fausto Gonzalez, Seven Angela Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 14-foot rear line variance for an existing 14-foot by 14-foot or 196-square-foot pavilion pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. So we don't need to open a public hearing here, but we did have an opportunity to review or have a first discussion with you. You have a very odd triangular lot, so that was clear. You originally, when you were working with the contractor, didn't think you needed a permit, you know, or any issues where you were looking to put it, there's an outdoor patio there, that you thought you would be able to just put this, the pavilion there without any issue, but it came to somebody's attention that it was a little too close to the property lines. So we did, now I'm understanding there's a new survey here?
Yeah, revised, yeah.
Because one of the things we were concerned about was, we couldn't necessarily see everything else that was on the property and where everything was. So the gazebo is, appears to be, the closest corner is 36.1 inches in, 36 feet, one inch in. The patio is 32 feet, so the patio is fine. We just need to make sure that everything else meets the...
As you address that, it's an odd-shaped lot, so when you're standing at the gazebo, you're actually in your neighbor's side yard. That's why, from the drawing, it indicates you're behind the house, yes, but it's, you're staring at the side, you know?
Yeah, it is in your rear yard, so that's supposed to be 50 feet back, so you've got 36 feet, one inch, so you really need the 14-foot, what are we going for here? Yeah, the 14-foot rear line variance. What's concerning me is that you have a shed in their front yard and pool utilities. But it's not, because it's not, it's behind the rear line of the house. He's okay.
Yep.
Like, barely okay, like the corner of that shed is right on the line of that rear line of the house. So, okay. And it's 25, that point is 25 feet in. That's why it's important to get a survey that has really good measurements on it. All right, so I think we have all the information we now need, right, Aziz?
Shed is at about two feet or so. Wouldn't it be better just to give him a, while we're cleaning up, just give him a corner? Because I mean, technically, he is in...
Why? What is he needed for?
Because...
That's fine.
But if you look at it, it's...
It's behind the rear line of the house.
Okay, oh, it's kind of, okay, okay.
And it's more than 25 feet.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, okay, now it's...
Yeah, he's fine.
Okay, I was looking at the second line, okay.
Yeah, no, he's fine.
Okay, so that is fine, okay, from, okay. I think that's it.
So I think it's just...
I don't see any...
All right, so motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We'll see you next month, because then we have to have a public hearing on yours. Give your neighbors an opportunity to comment, if you're our neighbors, if you can get collect letters ahead of time, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And Jackie will give you your information, because you'll have to have a sign on your property.
Say that again?
You'll have to have a sign on your property, so your neighbors will know what the public hearing is about.
Very good, thank you.
All right. We'll see you next month. All right, item number four, Appeal 4042, Michael O'Halloran, 11 Lori Street, Poughkeepsie, is requesting to build on an undersized lot, which is approximately 0.86 of acre in an R1 zone on Birch Drive pursuant to Section 194-130 of the zoning ordinance. Oh, Mr. Halloran warned us he was going to, he could be late, so we're going to actually put this on for second call, because I don't see that he's here. All right, so, hold on to that thought. Item number five, the applicant asked to be adjourned to next month, so there's no number five, so we're going to item number six. Appeal 4045, Sabato Vivenzio. I hope I said the right... Okay. Six Americana Boulevard, Hopewell, is requesting a 10-foot sideline and a 34-foot rear line variance for a 24-foot by 30-foot or 720-square-foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. So your detached garage is less than the 750-square-feet that's allowed, so you're good on that. So what we have to do talk about is where it is actually placed, and this is the first time that we're seeing this application. Do you have an existing garage on your house now?
Yeah, it's in my, underneath my house.
One or two-car garage?
It's a two-car garage, yes.
Okay, so explain to us why you need another large garage?
Well, because my garage there right now, it's like only like seven feet high, and I have two trucks, can't even get the nose inside.
Okay.
Very, very small.
Okay. Let me just get your application out there in front of me. And so a typical two-car garage would be 24 feet by 24 feet. You're proposing 24 feet by 30 feet. Why?
Like I said, I have two trucks, and I just need some storage space.
Because it's the 30 feet that's actually putting you, why you need the variance?
It's because I got, I need some more property on the left side and the rear. Why is it oversized?
Well, again, a typical two-car garage, two-bay garage would be 24-foot by 24-foot. by twenty-four foot, okay?
Okay.
If you eliminate and if you reduced your thirty feet down to the twenty-four feet, or just, can you explain, why is it so far over? Why can't you move it closer to your house? Or closer to the rear of your property? Why is it so close to your neighbor? Why are you proposing to put it so close?
Where the driveway's going, like, if you look at my house, it goes straight overhead, that's where the garage would be.
Right, why? Why are you suggesting that, go there?
Well, it's really not that close. I mean, it is pretty close to the house, it's only like maybe ten feet away.
I don't, I don't know.
I'm seeing ten feet.
I'm seeing quite a distance, it's twenty-plus feet. Can you move the proposed garage closer to your deck area maybe? Because you have a paved driveway and a gravel driveway. So right now, you are right in front of the gravel driveway. If you move it closer to the paved driveway, you'll reduce the, the variance that you need.
Well, if you, on the side over here, I have a sidewalk, and I have a fence, I have a little garden over there, it's just like, if you go straight with the driveway, it would be right there. I mean, I could move it a couple of...
We're seeing, you actually have it, if you go straight, that's one end of it, and the left side of it ends at the end of the paved driveway on your left. But the other side goes well beyond the paved driveway and the gravel drive.
On the left side, I've only, I have a ten...
Closest to your neighbor.
Yes. I got fifteen feet right now. I need another ten. We need twenty-five total, right? On the, on the right...
You're supposed to have twenty-five feet on your side yard, right?
Right, right. I mean logically, I mean, Matt came over there and looked at it, like, that's don't, logical place to put it, right?
We're not arguing that that's the, you know, although we're, we are questioning why can't it go closer to your house?
It could go a couple of feet, but not a lot.
Okay, so that could reduce the request by a couple of feet, okay? But then you also have a request for a thirty-foot wide garage, where a normal garage would be, a normal tw- a two-car garage would be twenty-four feet. So that's six feet larger than normal. So I understand you want storage, I understand, you know, you have, you want, you're looking for something that is going to have higher garage orders.
I want it to make it look good, that's why I put the, the gables at the top.
All right, we can't both talk at the same time, just you and me, okay? So how tall it, let's actually, let's have a discussion, how tall is this garage proposed to be?
It's probably gonna be like eighteen, nineteen feet.
Why so high?
Because I got a, a little loft at the top with the two windows. You guys don't have the plans, right?
This is what we have.
Okay.
I have a survey.
It just looks, why, it looks, it, it looks nice.
So do you have an elevation? Do you have a plan of what it's gonna look like?
Yeah, the building department has it.
Who has it?
The building department.
Okay. Oh, wait, is it in the package that you gave us tonight?
No. No.
No, I didn't see anything in there.
No.
There's pictures in there.
But we have, we do, 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 we do,
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Benzia, we will see you next month. Talk to Jackie about getting a sign and, you know, but talk to your neighbors.
Yes.
Make sure that they are on board with us.
No problem.
We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, let's keep going through the agenda and then... Okay, so item number seven, Appeal 4047, Michael Smilkstein, 26th Clover Branch, Hope Bowl Junction is requesting a 51-foot right sideline, 37-foot left sideline, and 37-foot rear line variance for a ground-mounted solar panel pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Hi, so again, we are not public hearing. This is just our first time looking at this.
Correct. So, good evening, Board. My name's Brian Flynn. I'm here on behalf of Sun Common, representing Michael Smilkstein at 26th Clover Branch Road in Hope Bowl Junction, and seeking a variance for a ground-mounted solar array. So they're folded like a book. If you just unfold them.
All right, I need you to speak at the microphone.
You can just give it, we can circulate it.
Yeah, just pass and run.
Yeah, we'll pass it.
All right, so if you open up those plans like a book, then it'll start correctly from that page all the way open with page one of the plans. So if you take a look, this array consists of 20 LG 435 solar panels, one SMA 7.0 inverter, and a minimally invasive 175-foot trench for conduit to an additional rapid shutdown initiation device mounted on the southeastern corner of the residence. Just a side note, there will be rapid shutdown at the array as well, DC disconnects. We are seeking an area variance.
All right, what does that mean?
A rapid shutdown initiation device is basically like a knife switch or knob that you can, that the fire department can turn off immediately if there's a fire risk upon coming to site. So we are seeking this area variance because we're not in compliance with the setback requirements despite us working and complying under all other relevant code under Chapter 80, Chapter 100, 110, 154, and 194 in your municipality. Although this solar array will be significantly and naturally screened from neighboring parcels, we're seeking a variance for Chapter 100, Section 7C specifically. The setbacks are respectively 49 feet, 63 feet, and also 63 feet again from the side and rear property lines. We will be working in compliance with any other local, state, fire, and electrical code as well. For the duration of the project, any vegetation or disrupted landscape will also be restored accordingly to prevent erosion harm to microecology. If you take a look at the EAF, there was also no harm noted by the DEC or any other resource mappers in terms of affecting wetlands or other resources negatively. We're ultimately seeking guidance from you, the zoning board, so we can move forward to planning board review. I just appreciate your time and consideration here. Just wanted to see what you had to say.
Mr. Smilkstein, were you ever here before, a couple of years ago, to get a variance for your garage?
Correct, yep.
I have to tell you, you did a beautiful job on that garage.
Oh, thank you very much.
I walk by it all the time, and it's really done very, very nicely.
Thank you very much.
I do want to compliment you on that. All right, so again, you're proposing to put the solar array in the middle of the backyard. Anywhere you put it on this site, you're going to need a variance.
Correct.
Motion to advertise.
So moved.
Thank you. We'll see you next month, guys. No, you're putting it where it belongs, so I'm not going to argue with you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So just see Jackie over there about the requirements for your sign. Good, thank you. Item number eight, Appeal 4047, Victor Margiata Jr., Six Twin Ponds Court, Stormville, is requesting a 10-foot sideline variance for a 16-foot by 18-foot or 288-square foot gazebo pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Okay, so this is the first time we're seeing your application.
Yep.
Find your application. How did I lose that one? All right, so if you don't mind telling us what you're proposing to do here.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we just took on a project. We put an in-ground pool in, did a patio, and, you know, actually, we're... We should get the permit closed out within the next week or two. So while we were doing the patio, we wanted, you know, there were a couple additions that were thrown our way, some ideas. So, one of them was to have like a gazebo pavilion-type area for shade. So we agreed. We thought it was good. Told him, I said, "Look, like, do we need a permit for it?" Contractor says, "Nope." He's like, "As long as you're within the same setbacks as the hardscaping."
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good. I said, "All right, cool." So I was happy. I'm like, "Yeah, this is great." My cousin Danny's the electrician, you know, he's working there. He's like, "Vic, you'd be so much happier with this instead of doing like a fireplace or something." So I agreed. So they start building, and I get home from work, and I'm looking at it. I'm like, "There's a church being built in my backyard." So I'm like, "All right, something's got to..." You know, so I said, I called the town, and Max has been to my house like plenty of times for other different projects, right? So I said, "You know, I find it hard to believe I wouldn't need an additional permit." And they said, "No, you need 25 feet." I said, "You gotta be kidding me." Because my contractor said he checked, and he told me, he talked to the town, and it was 15. So now I got like this half-built gazebo, you know, there, and like, I'm stuck. Right? I'm so much money into this project, but it's good with the three kids and, you know, COVID and stuff, like, we didn't get out much. And I said, "Let's bring, you know, if we can't go to the beach or we can't go somewhere, let's just do it here." So there's one location for the pool based on where the septic is and everything. So that was designed wonderfully. We were thrilled with the builder. The contractor has done exquisite work. Like, I am so pleased with what they've done. Like, they just finished the fence today. Very minimal work left for them to do. The landscaping's going to go in, all the hardscaping's done now. You know, there's some plantings that are going to go down, screening. We're talking privacy screens. You know, just like some things to tidy up, right? The final grading and everything. So I went over, I went over to my neighbor, because once I left here that day...
Question.
So I only have one neighbor, right? I'm a corner lot. So you guys probably know my neighbor. I think he's in here a lot. But anyway, so he wrote a letter. I don't know if you guys have copies of that. He actually dropped it off for you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have it if you need it. A really nice guy. And so I went over, we were talking. I said, "Look, Mike," I said, "I'm stuck, man." You know, we already have this thing going. They already started building it. I told the guy to just stop, right? Like, I went to the, I called the town. They told me, "It's got to be 25 feet." I ran outside, I told them, I said, "Get your guys off of this. Put the hammer, the nail. I don't want anyone doing anything. I got to do this the right way."
Wanting to advertise?
I'm sorry. Oh, you can tell I talk a lot, right? It was easier when I owned the condo.
Okay.
You got to read the letter.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So Mike, I guess, has an engineering background as well. You know, he was looking at it, and they loved it, right? Like, they said, "The colors are great. It's awesome, right?" Their daughter actually like teaches like swim lessons and stuff. She's a lifeguard, so it's great, because my two girls are, they're not even five yet, and my son is like 11 months. But anyway, so it's nice to have that next door, I guess. But yeah, he looked at it, and he said, "You know, this is, this is great. It's beautiful, right?" Like, his only concern, we had in between both properties, the majority of it is on my property, but there was like a stone-lined ditch.
Okay.
Right? And I think it was maybe just for water drainage.
Like a swell that kind of slows down?
Yeah, I mean, there was always a swell, like, there was always a swell in between the properties.
Right.
But it starts out where it's actually like a foot on his property.
Okay.
And then it like kind of comes back down where the rest of it is all on my property. So he said, "As long as they, you know, if they put that back, I'm fine." And then the slope, you know? So instead of being 25, we're actually like, it'll be 16 feet. I think the survey says the pavilion, 17. The back wall, or the sidewall, I would call it, of the pavilion, the retaining wall is 16 feet from the property. You know, the overhang on the survey, because I had to obviously pay for a new survey to come out, which was good. I wanted it anyway, you know, with the pool and the deck and everything on it. And the overhang says 14.9, but that overhang is not cut yet, because I told them to stop. Like, where it's going to meet the other pieces of wood. I'm not a contractor. I have pictures if you want to see. But that will be cut back, you know, where it's well within the 10-feet variance I'm looking for. The only other concern he had was how to make it look presentable for him, right? Like plantings, is there going to be a privacy screen? Like, is there going to be a retaining feature? And in the letter, he questioned, you know, well, you know, if he needed a three-foot retaining wall behind the pool, you know, if this elevation, he says it's eight to 10. It's not, but let's just say it is. Let's say it's eight feet, right? Because if I stand on the, I guess, the lowest part of the property, like, it's basically at my head, and I'm, you know, 6'1". So, but even if it was eight feet, he just wants to make sure he's not like stuck with like, you know, some overgrown thing.
Right.
So my yard is like immaculate. It's the nicest, the yard on the block. Like, I think I paid two different companies to come out and like fertilize it. Like, today, they were just aerating it, overseeding it. And, you know, even they said when I was over there, like, "We're sorry, you got to look at our yard, because it's like dandelions all summer, right?" So I said, "Mike," I said, "Anything you want, we'll do," right? So the ditch is actually currently being restored. They started working on it today. We're going to put some boulders around it just for retention purposes, just to make it look nice, you know, and just to meet his demands.
Okay, you're the current owner.
Correct.
What happens when you go to sell that house and the next owner? If this area, is it unmowable as he suggests?
Sure.
So...
So it's going to be, it's not going to, it's not going to have grass. It'll have mulch beds, plantings. You know, we went to the nursery and picked out, you know, all the ornamental grasses, shrubs, trees, whatever you want to call them.
I mean, putting some perennial that's just going to grow and just fill the area is probably, number one, it will collect water, so it will stop some of the water issue that potentially was there. I don't know about providing screening, but at least it's, if it's something that, it's low maintenance and, you know, prevents...
Yeah, absolutely.
If we're looking overgrown, it appears you might meet his concerns.
Oh, absolutely. So we're putting 14 giant green thujas down the property line, right? That should alleviate any concerns that he has.
Okay.
But I don't know if they're going to reach the actual pavilion, because I don't want to line the whole property. I mean, at some point, enough's enough with them, you know?
But the visibility of this gazebo from your neighbor, how well are you addressing that screening? How tall are what you've just proposed to go in?
The green thujas? They're eight to 10-footers that he's planting. You know, they grow to 20 to 30 feet, depending on the, they're nice, too. They're deer-resistant, so they don't, you know, get eaten like the emeralds where they go like this. So that's, that's the primary source of screening, the only source of screening. It's wide open between us now, and it always has been.
So it's, these are a form of arborvitae? I'm not understanding.
Yeah, giant green thujas, yeah. It's a deer-resistant form of, and the nice thing, they only go about eight to, maybe max 10 feet wide, but they can get 20 to 30 feet tall. And they're one of the absolute best, other than like a Norwegian spruce, right? To, for a privacy screen, a windscreen, sound screen.
They fill in nicely.
Phenomenal. So, yeah, I mean, that's going to all go down. He's not going to have it, there won't be any issue with the looks of it. He even said it looks gorgeous from up here. You know, I was on his deck looking at it, like, it actually doesn't look that...
His letter, though, is dated September, there's two letters, you know, right?
I only know one.
Okay, so there was one letter dated September 12 that you appear to be, have addressed, and now there's another letter dated September 26.
Oh, that's yesterday.
Yeah.
Oh, I got the September 12.
He's concerned about, September 20, Cisco's on about the ditch that is no longer existing as far as he knows, and he's worried that the runoff will become greater.
Okay. Is there a way that I can get a copy of that letter?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't necessarily need it. They're going to restore the ditch exactly as it is. Actually, it's actually probably going to look nicer than what it did before and function better. We're actually going to put, instead of just stone, like, there was just stone there, like little chunks of stone. We're actually going to do, it's going to be very symmetrical. Like, I'm very into symmetry and lines. Might be OCD, but it's going to start about three feet wide at the top. We're going to go one foot, about one foot, maybe 18 inches to his property. You know, similar to what it was before. Like, if you look, you know, on the, I have other pictures if you need. And then it's going to, it's going to merge basically all onto my property like it did before. We're going to bring it down a little bit farther. We're going to do it all, probably, what is it, three-quarter gravel? And then we're, we actually saved all the stones, because right now it is covered. I called the contractor, I said, "It's all dirt." So then I said, I went out there, you know, and I was picking at everything, and I found all the rocks where it was and everything. We have, actually, I have a, just to show you, I don't want to, I'm taking up everyone's time. Sorry, Mike.
I was late, don't worry.
No, no, I know, I appreciate it. You're going to get me home to the kids earlier.
He saw he was here, so I was...
Yeah. So if you, this is, I don't, I'm sorry. Actually, maybe both of these have it in there. Your vote on here, this one just has stakes. So the stakes are marked in the property line. You've already found the existing drainage system. That system is actually dead now. We redid our drainage from the front gutter, the back, rear gutter, and then this is the pudding drain, merged it all down into one. It's actually going to come out lower on the property line than it was before.
Can you hear the microphone?
Yeah, just go back to the microphone, sorry.
So they're actually, no, I get you guys excited right now.
Doesn't need a mic.
So...
His voice is loud enough that he probably doesn't...
I don't need the microphone. They could hear me. My dad's watching.
Uh, you know.
My dad's watching right now.
All right.
So, yeah, I have no concern about the ditch. I know it's his concern, and it's every right that he has.
The one thing about a swell that you got to be careful of is how fast the water will go through it.
Yep.
Which is why you want to line it with rock. Because the rock will actually slow it down.
Yep.
Okay, so if you're actually putting in more rock and extending the rock area, that should actually make it better. He's concerned, he does mention, though, concern about the runoff from the roof of the gazebo?
The runoff from the roof?
No, I don't think he...
Would that be from, that's, it's just a regular pitch?
That's a standard four, but it's increased, because you have the roof coming down, plus it's falling on the slope, so you, you've actually, the way he's looking at it, if I'm correct, is you increase the amount of water that's going to be coming down off that side of the property. So he wants to make sure, and it sounds like you're addressing it.
Oh, 100%.
Where how hard, the same amount of water would have just hit the patio instead of the roof, but how hard it comes down from the roof might be the issue.
So I did question the pitch of the roof. It's a standard pitch, seven, you guys know this better than me. I think five, seven. Does that mean anything to anyone?
What, for the pitch, yeah. Five, 12, or seven and 12? I don't know what you say, five, seven. Standard probably is about five and 12.
Right.
Always put a gutter on the roof.
Yeah. You can put a gutter on it, and the gazebo running down the back, yeah.
So I did ask him if we lowered the pitch, right? And he said, "Living in the Northeast with the snow and stuff, like, you want it to fall off. You don't want it to just sit on top."
Oh, no, right. You don't want the way...
So, okay. You know?
But you're addressing all the concern that your neighbor has.
100%.
Okay.
It's not better than probably what he wants. I actually knocked on his door earlier today. I missed him. He had just gone out. Just, I'm involving him. Like, I want him to be involved. I want to do the right thing, like...
That's good.
You know, it's, I got stuck between literally a rock and hard place with this because the guy started building. If he didn't build, like, he said he would take it down. When I came, you know, I went into the building department, they told me, "Leave it. Don't, don't tell them to rip it down. You're going to need a variance." I said, "All right, I'll go for the variance." But like, what should I do?
They shouldn't have told you, "You will get a variance."
No, no, they didn't. They said, "You'll need, you'll need a variance."
You'll need a variance, okay.
No, they didn't. They did not, yep, Max, trust me, Max did not say, "You'll get it."
Okay.
Right? But he said, "You'll need a variance." So I said, "Okay." So that's when, you know, I saw Jackie like 10 times.
Right, so I mean, I have to be honest. What you've proposed to us is beautiful, okay? The, what we've seen is, the work that's done already is, I mean, beautiful. There's no question that you're investing a lot of money. I guess, you know, and so the fact that you're already engaging in a conversation with the neighbor, you're, you're addressing concerns, again, recognizing there's a new letter, we'll make sure you get a copy of it. Just continue to address those concerns. We will have a public hearing next month after I get permission from these other board members for, for the advertising of that, so he would be welcome to come again. The one issue that I see outstanding from our building inspector's review is the height of the retaining walls. How high are these retaining walls?
I checked that today.
Oh, you're good?
Yeah, we had looked at it today.
All right, good. Never mind.
Yeah, we made, I made sure, I told them nothing over four feet. And the only, I don't know, the only reason we didn't put, we put the, has he addressed in the first letter that you have about putting the retaining wall behind the pool? That was so I could keep it as far off of the septic as possible without grating over it. Like, I didn't want to grate over the septic. I want to leave the septic alone. I said, "I'm not moving it." And I looked into that. I don't want to spend that kind of money for, you know, what they call the Cadillac of septic systems, you know? So it's got, it's a 15-lateral system. The guy said, "If you lost the first or second one, you'd be all right, but you don't want to move it." I said, "So then I won't move it." So that's why we put the retaining wall. Not just, "Does it look nice?" It also hides the equipment better, and it keeps me off of the septic.
Got it.
And I called the Board of, what is it? The Board of Health regarding like, you know, how close you want to be to your septic and all of that. So we stayed way off it.
Okay. I'll answer questions from board members.
Motion to advertise.
Thank you.
Second.
That was where we were headed.
Sorry. Rocco, you said something about a gutter, like, is that...
Yeah, you could, you could put gutters on the gazebo.
And then just tell them...
And then just direct the water.
And just bring the water down to...
Yeah, so if I see this, like, when I get the letter, I can, I'll go talk to them. And I'll just say, "Hey, look, if you want, I'll put gutters here. I'll have a drain to my, to this side of the property. It's not even going to affect your side."
That takes care of the water drainage, and that's probably only a question for that. Probably about 400 bucks.
That's, that's like a, for what happened, oh my God. It doesn't help that the market's getting killed right now, right? You know?
Motion to advertise for a public hearing for next month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
As pleasurable as it has been to chat with you, we'll see you next...
We'll get to do it again. So I, he can't continue building, right?
Nobody can, no.
Just leave, let it be.
There's a guarantee you're going to get this variance.
Yeah, because I know, I'm surprised, I don't know, did my phone ring?
And one neighbor is letting us know. We don't know about the other neighbors.
Got you.
Okay?
There's only, how many, like, what neighbor was...
500 feet of your property.
Okay.
500 feet or 250?
250.
250, okay.
I'm not going to...
Wrong board.
Thank you.
But please see Jackie, because she'll get you the information on your sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to run it down, or?
All right. Item number nine, Appeal 2216, Shenandoah Farm LLC, 270 Jackson Road, Hope Bowl Junction, requesting an extension on their soil mining permit for Shenandoah Farms, which was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on July 8, 2008 pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. The permit was originally issued July 8, 2008, and renewed through October 27, 2022. Good evening again.
Two years from by, right?
Every two years, exactly. All right, so there's an existing operating soil mine. Every two years, in review of the permit extension, we do have the building department go out and do a review, so the board members have the report. That appears to be as proposed and in compliance, very low activity, reclamation of property, as materials are exhausted. So no complaints received on site or violations. Do I have a motion to advertise for the continuation of this permit?
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You still have your sign from last time?
We do. I just got to put the different date on it. I'll just find out when it's going to be. This will be the year also that the DEC will expire in the middle of it, so...
Okay.
We'll have to...
We'll work through that. Yeah, because our permit can't go beyond...
Yeah, I know that.
You're already familiar with that. We'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
Why do I have two people still here? Why do I have two people still here? Oh, okay, all right. Just, just checking. All right. So we are going back to item number four, appeal 4042 Michael O'Halloran. 11 Lori Street, Poughkeepsie requesting to build on an undersized lot, which is approximately 0.86 acres in an R1 zone on Birch Drive pursuant to section 194-130 of the zoning ordinance. So good evening. We, we had a chance to chat with you last month and you got us some additional information, which we very much appreciate that the lot was, the subdivision was created before zoning existed in town.
Right.
Before 1963. And the property owner merged these lots. Just this year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And that the owner doesn't own any other lots because that's an important consideration in the town code. If he actually owned other lots, he'd have to merge other ones to get this property to the right size.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other important fact for us is that there are neighboring properties that are similar in size. Because again, the subdivision was.
Yeah, we gave a few examples, right, of different parcels?
Yep. Yeah, there's a whole package that you've now provided to us.
I got nervous after the last one. I didn't have, I didn't have enough info, so.
Please understand that sometimes lots are created and people knowingly, they get compensated for the fact that they now have an undersized lot. And when you get compensated, you can't, then shouldn't be expecting that you should have the rights of a full lot size. And that's what, that was what we were trying to get at.
Okay.
The owner already compensated in some means and then, you know, then had an undersized lot, which you can still use in a sized lot. You just can't use it as a residence.
Right.
So that's why we were looking to get more information on this.
Gotcha.
This happened a very long time ago.
Sure. Thank you.
So, yeah, so just do you understand why we were looking for that information?
Okay. And Oswald did a new survey for all of you that I think you have a copy of.
No, we, I don't have a copy.
Yes, well, it should be. It's the last thing in the package.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
Yep.
Oh, that, you're okay.
The engineer I'm working with is Bill Povau in Fishkill.
Sure.
And we're in the process with the owner of getting the property Board of Health approved. So there's two things, if I'm going to make this type of investment, why I'm coming to you first. One is getting Board of Health approved, which is with a different department. But my concern is buying an undersized lot and then not being able to get a variance because I just made a $70,000 investment that I wouldn't be able to build on. So I'm trying to just stay ahead of the game and see what you guys would think of it.
But now that you have a survey, you need to look, be aware of your buildable area on your property. All right? If you have to have, it's a very long lot.
It is.
But it's not.
Not deep. No, it's not very.
So if you have to have a 50-foot front yard and a 50-foot rear yard, you've got 25 feet to build your house.
Right. So Bill said that he looked at the neighboring house and where that house is put, there, the mark from the street has the right distance and then the backyard is more of a shorter distance.
Okay.
And that's considering how long our property will end up being. I told Bill that we could have a smaller backyard and more use our side.
That's when they need another variance.
Which would need the, what would need the extra variance?
If you're reduce, if you're looking to reduce the amount of your backyard or the required backyard.
Well, I don't know the exact numbers, but he, he went to.
Wide a house is he proposing, front to back? When you walk through your house from your front door to the back door, how wide a house?
We did not, we don't have the.
You don't have a plan yet?
We didn't pick the plan for the house yet.
Right now, you're limited to that house can be no more than 25 feet deep, which is workable. Okay.
It's work, so, I mean, I.
That has to include your eaves, that has to include any staircases, or you're going to be back here looking for a variance.
Right.
The issue with building on an undersized lot, particularly one that's, has some limitations. Unless there's, this has different zoning, but I don't.
No, I didn't.
Typical R1 zone.
So what you're saying is kind of what Bill was talking with me about. I think you're spot on. But his, he had confidence in what I was saying, my wife and I wanted in a ranch. We're not going to be going down either because we're going to put some fill on top.
And as long as you're talking about a house that's side to side is going to be larger than.
That's the way he's going to do. So he's very aware of pretty much.
300 feet side, going side to side. So.
Right. So that's the way he's going to kind of design it with me when we do the building project. He, he actually pretty much word for word said what you just said and said that we would need to keep that in mind on how we're going to develop the house because of those extra variances.
But again, anything you want to put in your backyard, you have to be sensitive to the limitations of the little area.
Okay. So I'll keep, I'll bring that up to him again and, you know, maybe he could, when we go there next time, he could show me, hey, this is what you're limited to and I'll get a better feeling.
He asked you to show you the buildable area.
Okay.
That would literally give you the box on this lot.
Right.
That would meet where you could put anything you want to do.
Right.
And not need a variance.
The buildable area. Got it. Okay.
And think of the future too. Swimming pools and that kind of stuff. You may be obviated from doing that without getting some sort of variance. That'd be difficult. You could have a very small backyard. You may not have a lot that you can put a swimming pool on in the future.
Okay.
Including sheds.
Yeah, the sheds have a smaller.
Yeah, but still, I mean, you're left.
Right. There would still be a concern. So I guess the one thing, and I thank you.
Have him show you the buildable area.
I will. And I will, I thank you for the heads up on this because the one thing I'm confident is, is I looked at the neighboring lot. It seems very similar to not have that backyard either. It is small back there and the way we looked at it, we're happy with the way that house looks. So we would feel comfortable, most likely, but I'm going to go back and do what you said.
Because even just the placeet, even just.
Wouldn't need it because it's too small.
Structure is going to run into issues with the requirements of setbacks.
Okay.
I think when we looked at this originally and the inquiry came in, that's the last. We recommended that we put that sort of lot, you know, as 500 feet. So we, we brought that up.
Yeah, but not knowing what he's proposing, our hands are tied. How, how do we, we can't just give a blanket variance for building.
Without knowing the building plans first. I understand that. I understand that. But in.
So let's just say like the other gentleman who built a garage and is now back for solar panels, you may be back.
Okay.
You know, he shouldn't be because it's.
Oh, I see where, because he came from one.
Understanding what your buildable area is.
Right.
Okay, so you're buying this lot, understanding the limitations of this lot.
Okay.
That would include you and anybody who buys it from you down the road.
So in the circumstance with the backyard maybe needing a variance, you can't give me any type answer on that because I don't have building plans. So I totally understand that one.
You're proposing to do and whether you'd have other options.
Totally agree with you. But in terms of the acre variance being an undersized lot, where would we be in terms of confidence in that type of variance considering?
What I would suggest the board do tonight is give a motion to advertise. We hold a public hearing next month. We hear from any of the neighbors if there's any concerns about an undersized lot.
Yep.
And then we, if nobody has concerns, we could approve it next.
Okay. And we could, and then I could come back speaking further on the other.
The depth, I mean.
Right.
The depth one.
At that point, we can't, we wouldn't be able to consider that actually then be a new application.
Okay, so I'm more doing that information with my engineer on my own.
You'll get to know this.
Information.
And you're, to a certain extent for a warrant, you're going to have to keep that house on the narrow side.
What do you say? What do you mean by that?
Narrow and long.
Warrant, you understand you got an undersized lot. You understand now that you have a limited building setback requirement. So you can't come in now and say, okay, we approve the, the undersized lot if that happens. And say, well, I want a 50-foot wide house.
Right, right, right. You guys are going to say no to that one. Yeah, yeah.
Well, and you also heard me say before, a typical car garage, two-car garage is 24 by 24 feet. You have 25 feet. All right? You can't go beyond that 25 feet. So you, you can put a two-car garage in, but you can't make it 30 feet.
Right.
If you're looking at a ranch or a raised ranch, that's doable within 25 feet.
Right. And that's what we're, that's, we're going ranch for sure.
But the stairs, the eaves, everything has to be within that 25 feet.
So I'm going to bring this all to Bill Povau, what you guys said, and we'll see where his confidence is on it too.
I mean, you'll be building a house that is long and narrow to meet the requirements. So even if your garage, you'll have, you have the length, but you don't have the depth.
Okay.
And the other houses that were built were either built in the 60s or in the early 70s, the neighboring houses. So they are kind of, yeah, so they're grandfathered in. But again, your, your, I mean, but your footprint is going to be different from theirs because of the current requirements.
Okay.
Motion to advertise.
So move, second. So move.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Thanks for the heads up too. I appreciate that.
Eyes open. Okay. I just want to make sure you, that you know what you're getting.
Thanks for letting me come late too.
Motion to adjourn.
Second to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Give me a green.
Please do, do I have a motion?
Thanks again.
I'm very used to anybody being a zebra to the motion.